Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our meeting. It is now 6:01, and I'd like to call this meeting to order. The Lofery Independent School District Order let the record show that a quorum of board members are present, that this meeting has been duly called, and that notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. Please stand. Go bow your heads for prayer. Lord, we are meeting today to conduct matters of business, guide our hearts and our minds in the spirit of fairness, right thought and speech, impart your supreme wisdom upon our activities so that our affairs may reach a successful conclusion. Summer is almost over, and a new school year will begin. May we be led by listening and see success in our service to others. Dear Father, we ask your blessings upon the students. Give them the desire to learn. We ask your blessings upon the teachers. Give them a passion for teaching. We ask your blessings upon the staff. Give them hearts for serving others. We ask for your blessings upon the administrators. Give them wise and discerning minds. Finally, we ask your blessings upon the school board, granted patience and understanding. Lord, please be with those who are sick, not feeling well, our beautiful community of Lofery. Thank you for all you do, in the name of Jesus. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor of the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. You may be seated. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes for June 12, 2023, and June 27, 2023? Ms. Casas? All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, no? Okay, the ayes have it. Do we have anyone for public comment? Okay, information items. We'll start first with the facility update.
Thank you, Madam President and Board members. Tonight, I know that through the weekly board updates, I've been giving you some information about the facilities, but I wanted to be able to tonight share with you some of the things that we have been working on over the summer. Some things are still in progress, and some things we have completed. The first item is painting of the Lofery Early College High School. We are probably 95% complete. Mr. Getta will be doing a walkthrough on Wednesday with the company. There are a few things that we need to touch up and still complete, but for the most part, the painting is done. If you drive by, it looks very clean. Of course, we haven't added lettering. We haven't added some things that will give that a little bit of color, but I think it does look, it does look very nice. The second item we have is installation of a fire long system at CE Bell. That is something that is currently in progress. They're still working on that, but that will be completed before the school year begins. Installation of the intercom system for David G. Sanchez. That's something that hasn't been completed yet, but that we'll be working on. The pavilion for CE Bell Elementary, I believe from what Ms. Flotis said, that that was, they were working on that, and it's either completed or near completion. We did some renovations with DAP. We tore down a wall. We're going to this year be housing junior high in one location and high school in another location. We also wanted to be more like centers where the students move from group to group, and so we're working with DAP. The renovations for the TIES program, they're working on the cabinetry. They started moving all of the furniture from the high school over today to put in the classroom, and so we will be ready to go by the beginning of the school year. The HVAC equipment, earlier in the year, the board approved $1.2 million for HVAC. All of that has been installed and completed. So last year, we really didn't spend a lot on any kind of units. I know we've had a couple go out this summer that we're going to have to work on, that were on the fair list, not on the poor, and so we will be looking at that, but that is complete. The controls, which was another $600,000, we pretty much completed San Houston. We're on Sanchez and Dominguez, and then we'll be working at the Lofery High School main gym. So the controls, we are still working on. Lion Stadium scoreboard, if you have walked, gone by the stadium, it is already up. Last week, they did the audio room. There was training on Friday. We had a meeting this morning. Tomorrow, we will be sending out for advertisements, and so there will be, we're finalizing what that looks like. We have a few leads as far as people that might be interested in advertising. There are four main advertisers that we call the gold sponsors at the top, and those are each $20,000 spots. They can be paid monthly or quarterly, but those are always on. So even when the scoreboard is not on, those are, what is the word that I'm looking for? Illuminated, I guess. Yes, and so they're always on. So anybody that gets those spots, you can see it from the expressway going east or west, they're on for every event. Besides getting that particular spot, for every, there are six home football games, they'll have two commercials that they'll be able to play, 30-second commercials. They'll also have two different times that we will say something about their, about their sponsorship. And then there's also, on our webpage, we will list them as sponsors. At the bottom, we wanted to make sure there was opportunities for other people, so there are five digital spots. And so for the season, for the fall, those are $1,000 for each spot, and it's $1,000 for a half. So you can, you can buy a half, and then the second half, another sponsor will come up. And so that's another opportunity if somebody wants to advertise through a scoreboard. First year, we're not doing any first quarter sponsors, touchdown sponsors, field goal sponsors, halftime sponsors, or anything like that, because we're just trying to get used to the system. So we'll have the main sponsorship on the board. Any questions about the scoreboard? I will send you, before I put it on social media, before I send it out, I'll send you all a copy, so that you all will see exactly what's going on in case anybody asks you. The point of contact to talk to is going to be the business office and Mr. Cavassos. So he will be the one, we need one person, because once they're sold, it's a first come, first served basis, so once they're sold, one person needs to be able to say they're sold. And we will also post on social media and let everybody know once they're sold out.
And there'll be like a form?
There's a form, there's a contract.
Oh, a contract.
And so he has that contract, so we will be ready to go with that scoreboard.
Okay, thank you.
Painting of the roof, I mean, patching of the roof suite, Mr. Getta and his team have been working on that. We're installing heating elements, but they're not doing that till the fall at San Houston. The cafeteria renovations, when we go for convocation, most of it will be complete. The chairs were backordered, so the chairs that you see for convocation are not the real chairs, but they're having to lend us chairs, because those are backordered, but they're working on that. Sound system in the main gym, we've had some problems with that sound system, so Mr. Casadis along with athletic departments split the cost, and they're fixing the sound system in that gym. We've had library renovations, again, the ester funds, part of it was to, we know that we don't always have the funds to build new buildings, but we do have funds to take the existing structures that we have and to update them. And so we want more than a library, we want a learning center. In these learning centers, you're going to have maker space, there'll be a chess table, but there'll be things like that. So elementary was completed last year. Mr. Flotis spent the two weeks of vacation coming in practically daily, working with him, and he's been opening up the building, and they have pretty much have the flooring and the paint completed, and now we're just waiting for the floor. Painting of CE Bell, if you ever, when you would go visit CE Bell, everything was a beige looking, except for the gym and the computer lab is yellow. It was that old-fashioned yellow that's been yellow forever. We painted it over, the maintenance department painted it over the, call it, over the break, summer break, and so now it matches the campus. So it gave it a little bit of cosmetic look. The playground has been ordered for David Sanchez, but it won't be coming in until about October, and so, but it has been ordered, and we're in the process of removing the old fuel tanks. You know, last year, we got new fuel tanks. Now we have to go through the process of doing that. Future projects, if you ask me, the top three that I think that we're going to have to look at this year and in the coming years, is we have a lift station at the Lofery Early College High School. That's the station that removes all of our waste out of the high school. We're having problems with those motors, so probably in the fall, we will go out and look at having to redo those motors and redo for that lift station. WV Green parking, just like we looked at high school, we're going to have to look at the parking in WV Green. And then we patched roofs, but that's something in the future, we just need to replace some roofs, and we're going to have to look at different ways that we may be able to address that. Any questions about facilities or anything over the summer, what we worked on?
On the roofs, is it, is there like any specific campuses?
We have quite a few. We have, you know, at Dominguez, it's the gym, the Bantall area, a couple of wings. Some of them are, you know, at Bell, we have areas green, the entire athletic field house needs to be replaced. So we have just quite a bit. Probably eight to 10 years ago, we replaced the high school roof on the main building, and it cost probably 1.2 million, 1.3 million, and that was almost 10 years ago. So we will be looking at, as soon as we accept the tax rate, and Mr. Cavassos and I have talked around September, we'll look at, we'll talk to our financial advisor, then we'll meet with the finance team, and then we'll come back to the board, and we'll give you some different options of things that we could do to address the roofs and the needs that we have. But we want to wait until everything kind of settles with the legislature, special session settle, and then come back at that time and meet.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
On the lift station, is there another nearby lift station, or do we already have one?
These are within, with, right by the high school. It's right next to the football field, and it belongs to us, and those motors help, it is for us, and so we need to replace those motors. It's been quite a year. From what I understand from Mr. Getta, we're talking around 30,000 to 45,000 to do that. So that's something that we will get some quotes on, and then we'll be bringing to the board. I know that Mr. Cesfides put that in the budget, because he knew that that was going to have to be addressed, so that's something we'll be bringing. Right now, because the motors aren't working very well, we're having to kind of flush them out frequently, and that's just not a good thing.
Any other questions? Okay, the next item. Superintendent Performance Goal One, Activity Four, Opportunities in STEM, Health and Medical Pathway and Business Pathway.
Again, Board Vice President Johnson and Board members, we, you'll see that I have listed a few of the changes that we have in these areas when we talk about our college and career, when we talk about our CTE or STEM. We have an addition of Principles of Information Technology at Green. That's a new course this year. We're trying to get that basic course completed in junior high, so that in high school, they can take more classes that focus on their pathway, or more classes of certifications where they get certificates. Also, when you offer that, what we're also looking at at the junior high is electives, visites, band, and choir, but our other electives are high school credits. So we're, instead of just offering junior high art, we're going to offer art one, instead of offering, you know, our Spanish is high school credit, and now we have Principles of Information Technology. So we did hire a physician, but the, that almost pays for itself with the CTE funds that we receive for each student that takes that class. We've also added the addition of a marketing pathway at Lofery Early College High School to increase the pathway offerings. We have in addition a EKG certification in the health science pathway that we have added to increase certifications, the addition of virtual welders in agriculture to help both our high school and elementary students, the partnership between the Lofery Academy and the welding school. We had a student that completed it last spring, because we just started it. We hope to have more, because they have a very good percentage rate of job placement working with them, and it works perfectly with our academy. We're also changing up our certifications a little bit with academy. Instead of offering night classes, we want to embed a certification during the day. So they may come and they may go from 8:00 to 9:30, and they take medical assistant, or they take dental assistant, and then at 9:30, they start their classes. But we feel that this specific group of students will benefit from it being within the school day instead of in the evening, because we were finding that we were having more students from the high school in the evening classes, and now high school has their own certifications at the high school, and we need something that we can give the academy students. We also had a higher turnover of students that didn't complete at night, and we want to make sure that within the day, hopefully, they'll complete. So that's something that Mrs. Ramos is working with Mr. Brusco on, and also with Mrs. Avietta in order to ensure that we have those certifications. Any questions about, about any of our, some of the additions this year?
On that one at Green, there's, was something that was already taught similar to that?
Mr. Vela teaches, but we, he could only take so many students, and so he offers something, and this is an addition to it. So now we have two CTE as well. We had a third CTE with the agriculture, but we were not getting very many students sign up for that, so we're going the business route there, and the other one was the agriculture, and we were just, we were getting just a handful of students that were interested at the junior high.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, next, we have Superintendent Performance Goal Two, Activity Four, Training on the dangers of vaping and fentanyl.
I know over the summer, you have read a lot about this. It is a huge concern, not just in the Rio Grande Valley, but all across the state of Texas. And so we started last spring. This is something that we're going to continue with training in the fall. We are going to have a safety day on the first Friday that we return, which is the 18th. And so across the district, every campus will focus on different safety topics. They'll have drills that day. We'll have the local law enforcement come in and talk to our students, but during that time, all of our Dominguez through high school students will get training on the dangers of fentanyl. When I attended the DEA presentation, it completely opened up my eyes about, I went home and I talked to my daughter, and, you know, don't ever get a timeout from someone, you just, you know, just all of those things, because it really did, you know, scare me. But we did have one, one Bill Kin Kil from DEA, excellent presentation. He's coming back this fall and presenting again, I believe it's September, and so we're going to see what we can do. We had 23. I was hoping we would have 2200, and so we're going to see what we can do to get more people to come. Students are also welcome. We also had our counselor from the academy present via remote, and we had 19 that got on that, and we tried both ways. Maybe they couldn't come in person, and so Dr. Latta presented, he did an excellent job, but again, we're going to continue, because we feel like it's just, it's that important that we continue to talk about that.
Okay, thank you. All right, now we move on to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve consent agenda items?
So.
Ms. Casas, have a second? Mr. Brianas? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Thank you. Now we're moving on to items to consider and possible action. The first item to consider and take possible action is to approve the district improvement plan for the school year 2023 through 2024.
Mr. Flotis will be presenting the goals and objectives for the district improvement plan. Policy does require the board approve the goals, and you did that in June, and you approved the five goals. Now they, policy requires you to approve the objectives, and then from the objectives, you'll see that we came up with activities. And so the activities is just how we're going to get to those objectives. So what you have listed here are the different objectives that we have. So out of the district improvement plan that I sent you a copy, and I gave you a hard copy, all of the objectives Mr. Flotis took out, so that you can have them and not be flipping through.
Good evening, Madam President, Mrs. Johnson, members of board, Mrs. Flotis. Again, back on June 12, we, you approved the goals, so between June 6 and June 20, our DPC was meeting, and we were working on the performance objectives and the strategies to support the objective. Again, they are listed there for you. You have a copy of the district improvement plan as well, with the strategies that Superintendent Mrs. Flotis mentioned. When you look at your performance objectives, what we did this year is we put a measurable goal, and because we do not have our results yet for all subjects or for all our campuses, it's kind of hard to predict what kind of a percentage we want. So we did put a percentage, if you'll notice, for Goal One, you'll see 3% measured, 5% measured. We put a measurable goal for a measurable, something that could be attained through there on the objectives.
And that is different from what we've ever done before. We've never had in the district improvement plan measurable goals, saying we have a certain percentage, and that's something that the curriculum office did this year.
Are there any questions on the goals or?
I have a question. On Goal Number Three, Performance Objective Number Two, it says the district will increase the number of participants in the parent volunteer program annually. Now, does that, does that mean that number of, of, because, you know, I've always had a question, when we have like a total of 4,000 parental participation, do we have any way of showing increase in individuals attending? Like someone did not attend in the beginning, but now they're, they're realizing the importance? Because numbers can be numbers, but I'm more interested in, in, we increasing the number of parents getting involved, in parental involvement activities.
So for example, instead of having the number of 4,000, Gloria Casas attended 13, something like that?
Was it something like? Something saying we got 10 new parents that had never been?
From the first one, if we had one in September, we had 20. If we had one in October, we had 21, we had one new one. Is that, is that what you're referring to?
See, because I'm thinking, even when you sign in, maybe have a column that says this is your first.
Parent meeting, yeah. I don't think we've ever done that, but I think that would be something very easy for Mrs. Laredo to do, to say, you know, here I'm signing in, is this your very first parent session that you have set? You know, and they just check off. So we know, you know what, at this particular presentation, we had 20 parents, but this is the first time they've done that. Or are you a parent that attends regularly? That would be an easy way to, that's something to look at.
I think that would tell us if we're increasing our presence in the community, parents, and...
I know classroom teachers, when they have the teacher, when they have literacy nights, they monitor their particular classroom, but when we have big events like the vaping and the fentanyl, the big things that we have, I don't think we've ever done that, so we can look at that.
Okay, and now, and the other one, on Goal Five, under Performance Objective Three, it says the district will increase the number of students participating and engaging in career regents. Now, 55% each school year, so better prepared. I guess, from where are we starting and where are we going?
I didn't bring those numbers with me, ma'am, but we can certainly look at that, and I can get that for you.
I can put that on the Friday weekly update.
Because 5%, 5% is not, yeah, 5% is not, you know, a lot, so.
Unless we're at 85, then 5% is a big percentage when you're already up here. If you're at 30, it's not that much. But if you're all the way up here, and, you know, say if I have 92% attendance, and I want to increase by five, that's huge. But if I'm at 30% attendance, and I want to increase, you know, so.
I guess that's where I'm, you know, I want to know.
You want to see the big, sure.
Yeah, I want to know where we're at and where we're going.
Absolutely, we can get that.
Okay, are there any other questions? Do I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the district improvement plan as presented.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Second, Mr. Brianas. It has been moved and seconded to approve the district improvement plan for the school year 2023, 2024. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, no? The ayes have it. Thank you, Mr. Flotis. Okay, the next item is discussion and consideration to approve the revisions to policy EIC Local, EHBD Local, EHBB Local, FDB Local, and FDA Local.
Yes, good evening, Board members and school board members, and so is, the first three that are listed on the chart are revisions to policies due to the multiple elementaries that we have. So EHBD, EHBB, and FDB are all because we have multiple elementaries. The third, the fourth, EIC, is revisions to address class ranking. As the high schools transitioned to an early college high school, language was updated to address dual enrollment and ranking cutoff date. And the last one is the FDA, which is emissions of inter-district transfers, it's just, since we adopted the DOI and amended the DOI to resend a transfer student at any time during the school year. So these were the languages, the revisions to the policy, local policies.
We also sent to all the board members, for me, it's easier to see the red, the red line items, so I emailed that to you, because that's easier for me to see, okay, everything that's marked down in red is no longer going to be there, or whatever is added in red. And so that's how, I thought that might be easier for you to review as well. And so, any questions on, on any of the policies that we've been altering?
Any questions? Do I have a motion? Okay, I have a motion from Ms. Alba, for a second by Ms. Casas. It has been moved and seconded to approve the revisions to policy EIC Local, EHBD Local, EHBB Local, FDB Local, and FDA Local. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, no? The ayes have it. Thank you. The next item is discussion and consideration to nominate and approve delegates for the TASA-TASB convention, September 29 through October 1 of 2023.
And by, by President, I received a reminder from Mr. Damron with TASB that we needed to send in the delegate and assistant delegate, and so I know some of you have served, but we just need those nominations tonight, so that I can send, have Ms. Pettis send to TASB, so if we can have a nomination for those two, two positions.
I'd like to nominate Alma Martinez to be our delegate this year.
I'll nominate, and I'll nominate Katie as alternate. Or do we know for sure? Are you all going?
Yes. Okay, I accept. Okay, it has, oh, do I have a motion? Ms. Casas? And?
I'll second.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Brianas? Any further discussion? Mr. Brianas, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. We have Alma Martinez going as the delegate and Katie Johnson as the alternate. The next item, discussion and consideration to approve twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four student handbook and code of conduct.
Before Mrs. Ramos begins, I do want to commend her. Because of the legislative session before we left for break, we had not received the changes to the student code of conduct, so we did get it back. And so she's had some late nights trying to make sure, but our next meeting is not till the fourteenth, and so, and school starts on the fourteenth, and so we needed to have this in place. So I do thank you for, for getting that completed.
You're welcome. So based on this, and you have it in front of you, of the student handbook and the code of conduct, together, we will be putting it together, but, and also in front of you, you have the updated topics, the updated information that would, needed to be updated based on legislation, okay? You have it in front of you, if you have any questions, we, we know and I can answer them, or have time to read a hundred pages.
Thank you so much.
I have another question.
How, how is the district besides being on the website?
So basically, you have an option, the students have an option electronically, or they can request it together.
And registration?
Yes.
When you did your online registration, you had to request either a hard copy or online. So the principal will get all of those registrations and see who requested it as a hard copy, and make sure that we made the copy.
Yeah, because it's very important.
And, and probably out of every handbook that we have, Mrs. Ramos, I, and anybody, principals refer to this constantly. We're always going to this. And something, I know that, that Ms. Verial worked on, those QR codes. This is something new, and she added some just to make it a lot easier to just click on that and go straight where you're going, instead of having to type in that address.
They go straight to the board calls. So if they have any questions, they, they go straight to the board calls.
So that was, that was new this year, the QR codes.
And at any time, the student can request.
Okay, do I have a motion? Ms. Alma, have a second? Ms. Casas? It has been moved and seconded to approve the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four student handbook and code of conduct. Is there any further discussion? Okay? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no? The ayes have it, thank you. Now we will reconvene in open, no, now we will go to closed session.
Correct.
And it is six thirty-four. It is now seven eleven PM, and we are now reconvened in open session. But the record shows that the superintendent accepted the following resignations as presented by the administration in closed session. Priscilla Chavez resigning, Christina Hernandez resigning, Ashley M. Ramos resigning, and Mark Parvin resigning. Are there any other motions from closed session?
Yes. I move that we offer a one-year probationary contract as discussed in closed session for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year for the following. Julio Cavazos, non-chapter twenty-one contract pending completion of required documentation. Jaime Gutierrez, one-year probationary contract pending completion of required documentation.
Okay, do I have a motion?
No, some motions, I'll sec, I'll sec.
One, Briana's second. Is there any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed, no? Ayes have it. Do we have district announcements?
Yes, ma'am. August the third, we have first day back for staff. And also, on that same day, we will be having a reading ceremony at the LaFeria Early High, College High School at five thirty. On August the eighth, we have convocation as well at LaFeria High School, Early College. And then August the fourteenth, we start, our students start back on the first day. August fourteenth as well, we have a school board meeting. September the ninth through October the first, there's a TASB Fall Convention in Dallas.
Thank you, ma'am, very much. Okay, if there's no further business, do I have a motion to adjourn? Alma, second? Ron? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, no? The ayes have it. It is now seven fourteen PM, and this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.